Okay, we're going to call the meeting to order. First of all, we're going to start with the Advanced Transportation District Agenda, because we want to go ahead and it's a fairly light agenda and get that done with. It won't take very long. I'm Alex Porcenio, the new chairman of the Board of the Metropolitan Transit Authority Board of Trustees and the Advanced Transportation District Board of Trustees. And you all bear with me, I'm learning how to do this as we sit here. This is my first big meeting. I've had several smaller meetings, but this is my first big meeting. So with that, let's take a moment and pause for some quiet reflection before we start our meeting. Thank you. I'd like to ask Doug Pontic to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Arnt, do we have any announcements or report?
I have just a few brief announcements. First of all, yesterday at the MPO meeting, VIA and the Advanced Transportation District were awarded, if you will, seventeen million dollars total. Recall that we submitted two proposals for STPMM funding, fifteen million, and a proposal for the ATD for Phase Two of the Park and Ride Facility at Stone Oak. That ATD proposal was funded at the fifteen million dollar level. And ten million dollars for VIA's service plan associated with amenities at Bus Stop. That was a ten million dollar request for which we received two million. So we received a total of seventeen million dollars from the MPO's STPMM funding. On a percentage of the total that was allocated, we were second highest from the perspective of agencies. The city of San Antonio receiving about eighteen point six percent of the funding, and we received fifteen point six percent. So that's a very good showing. I thank our board members who have, Mr. Lee and Dr. Gambetta, who have really been warriors on our behalf at the MPO. And where is Clay Smith? Clay Smith and Brian Buchanan, who on the staff level have worked, as Clay said, he's been working particularly the fifteen million dollar deal for about the last year. And so, thank you for your efforts. That's a good showing for the day. So that's excellent news. VIA is currently hosting the quarterly meeting of the APTA State of Good Repair Committee. That committee is comprised of both FTA and APTA representatives and representatives from throughout the country, from Chicago, Philadelphia, Florida, I want to say New York State, so that we have folks here from all over the country. Gary Glasscock has been a leader nationally in that effort. And so, Gary, thank you for that. And then finally, it is true that Bonnie and I are running away together tomorrow to Austin. We have the appeal of the court case in Austin tomorrow morning, and so we'll be there and report back to you as quickly as we have results. Thank you.
Thank you for those announcements. I might add that, well, we just got word today that the county commissioners appointed two new members, two new trustees. And Bobby Pettis is one of them. He will be joining us later in the meeting today, in fact, today for his first meeting. Rebecca Sadio is the other appointee. She cannot join us today, but she'll be here for our streetcar workshop on Thursday afternoon. So we're looking forward to welcoming them and get them plugged in right away. They're going to be part of an extensive orientation for those of us who are getting oriented pretty quickly here. And I might add, I guess with Mark and Mayor Martin's arrival, we all were in January, right, or December?
December.
December? And so, we've got five board members, five trustees, with about, pretty close to four months' experience at the most. And so, we'll be catching up with our colleagues who have years of experience. We're looking forward to that. So that was just another announcement that I'm important to add. With that, I believe the only item we have for active consideration is the consent agenda. We have a motion for approval. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion, a second. Are there any questions or anybody having anything they want to pull? Very good. We have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And the opposed, nay. Motion carries. The legal briefing that's scheduled for the agenda is identical to the one we're going to be doing as part of our regular VIA board member, board executive session. And so, we'll go into session, at that time postpone action on it, or there'll be no action, postpone considering it until after we convene as, during this meeting, convene as the VIA Board of Trustees. So with that, if there are no further items, Mr. Arnt, at this point, we'll adjourn this meeting and convene, called to order, the meeting of the VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority Board of Trustees meeting. And we've gone through the announcements already and the pledge, and so we'll go to the fourth item in our agenda, which is our citizens to be heard. Do we have a list of citizens?
Mr. Chairman, we have twelve citizens to be heard tonight. As your name is called, you're welcome to come to the front to make your statements, or if you'd rather make your statements from where you sit, please raise your hand and a microphone will be brought to you. Manuela Garcia.
I didn't know what to say about those streetcars that you are going to be having in parts of the Alamo and downtown, but however, however, I don't know, and there are other services at 281 North and also, and also, or another services at the West Side, multimodal transit center. And it's also, and there's also other people services, which I don't know why the people is not connected, at the West Side multimodal. And there's also another reason, and there's also another reason about, wait a minute, never mind.
Thank you. I'll go to you.
Damon Mason.
VIA trustees, be satisfied, is I Damon Mason. Tonight, I will lead you through your response to CAF 354,238 and CAF number 356,607 along with voice of my emphatic objection to the Central Business District's streetcar initiative. If you recall, I brought in a used money pack and a used Net Spin Reload pack at the January VIA board meeting. Considering your response, it's clear you do not understand why I was trying to get across to you. VIA, there's no excuse for you to have made the thirty-one day pass in the flimsy manner that you did, none. But both Green Dot and Net Spin know how to make sturdy finance media, have enough scripts to charge a fair price for it. There's no reason why VIA cannot do the same. I insist that you make thirty-one day pass a lot sturdier. You then continue to have tax smart cards, online account management defines the eating fair second face. Okay, VIA, it's clear I'll have to spell out this out for you. I could care less. I could really, really care less. That's not something to celebrate. There are people who do not have internet access. Even though it's not the issue, why would anybody, any brain, buy a smart card that can run it out when you're in a bad part of town with no cash? If the bloke has cash on him, why would he go through the trouble to charge up a smart card when he can place it right in the fare box? VIA, some of you here needs to have demonstrated how the world really works. VIA, Green Dot and Net Spin know how to create durable finance media. There's no reason why VIA cannot do the same thing. Green Dot and Net Spin charge less than five dollars, a fair price in my opinion, for their finance media, to the point where there are months where one or the others are stopped. VIA, perhaps you can be taking notes and asking some questions about why that is. Your thirty-one day pass is only worth that much, five dollars. Where's my thirty-dollar rebate? After your, at your party streetcar hearing, I raised several objections there. The greatest of which is where exactly do you plan to get the electricity to power that, that overgrown tinker toy? The only realistic method I can see is to draw, draw on the city electrical grid, which likely forces CPS to burn more fuel to compensate for the diverted electricity and escalate electric rates for everybody. What really angers me about your response to CAF number, number, three hundred fifty-six thousand six hundred seven, is that you completely ignore the point I was trying to make. Having necessary two hundred and ten million to construct the first phase of downtown streetcar is nice. Still, you ignore some very angsty dynamics that are at play. Well, what we behave toward as the US dollar is actually a promissory note from the Federal Reserve, a private bank that neither Federal nor Reserve does behavior. The dollar bills in your wallet. How many times do you think they have changed hands? Please understand, those promissory notes will lend out as US dollars at interest as soon as they are printed, and the interest compounds each time it changes hands. Think long and hard about what that means. At some point, that principal will have to be repaid in full. Once China and Russia finish ironing out the details for the allies about how to set up a trade system, isolate the United States away from the global economy with trade embargments unlike that what was done with Cuba, what do you think will happen here in the United States? Let me get you some food to talk, some food for thought to that computation. That two hundred and ten million dollars you're so proud of for saving for that streetcar will be worthless. Your mainland transit service, nope, sorry. This, this overgrown adobe hut you call it via metro center, kids that could buy it when you can almost pay the prior tax on it, let alone powering the building.
Russell Seal.
Thank you for allowing us to sit down at this. My name is Russell Seal. I'm a member of the Sierra Club and a long-term resident of San Antonio, born on the South Side of San Antonio. I'm a pharmacist. Thirty-two years of pharmacist, as a pharmacist, I have watched our air quality in San Antonio deteriorate. Transportation is a big part of that problem, not having viable alternatives. I congratulate VIA on having the vision and the new board members to study and analyze the issues and articulate that to the community so they can understand the overall problem. As a Sierra Club member, I've traveled all over the world, seen many other transportation systems around the world. What makes great cities and competing with great cities around the world revolves around the transportation system. Edinburgh, Scotland, Lima, Peru, Rome, Italy, these cities are contemporaries of San Antonio. We are competing with these cities, not only in the United States, but globally, for our businesses, our tourists, and our finding good homes for our residents. This is about reinventing the city of San Antonio. I congratulate the vision that the VIA board has seen in supporting the streetcar issue, and I am proud to say that I also support this streetcar issue. But we do need to articulate to the community the benefits and how to, why this is in the best interest of San Antonio. The plan itself, I have spent time, looked at it, it is a good plan. The citizens need to understand that and to have people come out and talk to them a bit more. I know VIA board has spent a lot of time articulating that to the community and tried to do that. But the, we are now getting the community to start in a dialogue that's going in the wrong direction, and hopefully, we can get people to come out and talk about it and bring a new vision to San Antonio. Without a healthy urban core, this city will not progress. And it is a benefit to the entire community, whether you're from the South Side, East Side, West Side, or Far North Side. This benefits and helps everyone throughout the city by making, where you can get downtown to get to a job, get to an event without having to pay ten to twelve dollars to park. If you're paying that, can't find a parking spot, have, our whole city and community and sense of community will fall apart. So again, thank you for the streetcar idea. It's a wonderful idea. It's a small part of the entire vision that we have to come together as a community, and we need to put the entire vision, what we want San Antonio to look like, ten years, twenty years, thirty, fifty years down the line, and get that vision to the community. Thank you.
Terry Burns.
Hello, my name is Dr. Terry Burns. I'm a physician and a representative here speaking officially on behalf of the Alamo Group of the Sierra Club. Most of you know this is one of the oldest and largest environmental organizations in the country. We have thousands of members here in San Antonio. We have, for over a hundred years, lobbied intensely and worked hard with volunteers across the country in support of quality of life for our citizens, which includes clean air, clean water, and safe, reliable, affordable transportation. We, we have really complimented VIA for its careful due diligence in the streetcar project. You have a great deal of information available on the internet and in the public libraries for all to review. It appears that you've done very careful studies and looked hard at a number of different important factors, so that this project will enhance transportation within the community for people of all ages, people handicapped and otherwise, people of all ethnic groups in different areas around the community, and all income levels. It is important, we believe, to have a viable alternative to automobiles in the city, and our air quality is deteriorating. It's very important that we not go into non-attainment, which we're on the verge of doing. Our Edwards Aquifer is at risk with continued sprawl. It is important that the downtown be a welcome area for increased growth in San Antonio and for the population and the business development that is anticipated over the next twenty years. In that spirit, we support VIA's efforts, and I'd like to really read a resolution approved by the Alamo Group in support. We, the Alamo Group, supports VIA Metropolitan Transit's multimodal goals and modern streetcar. The streetcar meets environmental goals of reducing bus congestion downtown, reduces air pollution and noise, calms traffic in streetcar corridors, encourages increased density in development in the downtown core, encourages active lifestyles of cycling and walking and alternatives to automobiles, removes automobiles from routes, provides fast and reliable service to all income levels, and ties in as a starter line for future multimodal transportation, connecting West Side, East Side, South Side, and reducing sedentary lifestyle and providing other important benefits to our community. Thank you very much.
Karen Seal.
Hello, my name's Karen Seal, and I'm also a member of the Sierra Club, and we are here to thank you today for the concept of the streetcars. My office, as an attorney, is about a quarter of a mile from here in Tobin Hill area, so it will, something like, the streetcar idea, the design, is going to be helping everybody downtown, be helping with our inner city, and we do appreciate that. I'm not going to spend a lot of time, I don't need the three minutes. I think you know why it's a good idea, and I'm hoping we can get this, the message to the community so that they're all behind you and supporting you. Thank you.
Candy Ramirez.
Good afternoon, my name is Candy Ramirez, and I respectfully dedicate my time, relinquish my time, to Mr. George Alejos.
Eddie Salinas.
My name is Eddie Salinas, and I also relinquish my time to Mr. George Alejos.
Stephen Sumaran.
Mr. Chairman, board members, just want to first off, start off with, please excuse me if I sound a little nervous. I just want to start off by stating, I've been a member of the West Side community, well, all my life, about twenty-two years. Went to Aller Lake University, now at the master's program at UTSA downtown. And, you know, I was looking at the plans and just thinking of how much easier, you know, after, at the end of my, of this semester, I'm thinking like, if these, this transit car, streetcar system was in place, how much more easier it'd be for myself and my fellow classmates to have access to different parts of the city and be more frequent. I, to be honest with you, I haven't used the bus system as frequently as I had since I was in middle school, but, and now I kind of use, just mostly use, to attend those, the Martin Luther King Junior March, the Park and Ride, I use that a lot. And, but I, as, on a different subject, I just recently went to San Francisco about a couple of weeks ago, and to look at potential law schools, and as I was there, I was, I happened to notice those old school kind of cable cars that were there, and I thought how interesting and how, hopefully, maybe that'd be something that we could bring here in San Antonio. And I found it, I was, I felt, I found myself at a point to where I feel like I'm obligated to say something on behalf of, I guess, my generation, that hopefully, well, if this is coming to effect, we would be using this more often, and hopefully, bring more persons like myself to kind of live more and be drawn to kind of the downtown area. I can kind of already testify that, my friends and I, we already kind of come downtown, but it's a little more convenient, I guess, to kind of stay out in more of like the I-ten area where things are a little more faster moving, because we kind of turned away from like the traffic and whatnot of the downtown. But after speaking to them and just kind of saying, well, we can, you know, take that, well, after I saw the routes, it'll take you to the Pearl, you're real close to like the South Town area, kind of real up and coming booming areas of the city that I think that would be real beneficial, especially if you had a more reliable, cooler, I guess, alternative to just taking a city bus. Thank you.
Thank you. Ferris Hodge.
Want to say to y'all, good evening. They have a song called "On The Road" again. Well, we are on the same road. Judge Wolf now is backing down on the streetcar, but he got who he want in the city that's on this board, in the city council. And Mr. Joe Crow, I saw him the other day, and he said, it should be a vote. And I want to read this here, put this in the record. Mr. Porcenio and Bonnie Otto is going to go to Austin, Texas. VIA suing the AG, and VIA is going to get sued too. Case number D-1-GN-13-008230 in the District Court of Travis County. VIA did not give us any background on that information, and we should have had some kind of background while y'all going to Austin, but I just put one and two together. I took my survey, and the people of the city of San Antonio say, VIA, y'all need to get y'all act together. Y'all think y'all going to walk over us like y'all have in the past, and y'all not going to do it. I talked to Mr. Joe Crow, he's talking to the city council, Judge Wolf, been Holly Wolf ever since he's been in office, and he think he gonna, because he put you board members in office, it's a rubber stamp, but it's not a rubber stamp no matter who's in office. The Primo bus, it'll say joke. Bounce, bounce, bounce. I was on the bus one day, and I couldn't hardly breathe, and I, I was the only one. I told the bus driver, I'm about to have a heart attack. My heart was going boom, boom, boom. And he said, come up here where I'm at. What is your name? I said, my name is Ferris Hodge Jr. He said, well, sir, breathe. I don't know how to tell my boss if you have a heart attack and die. I said, just tell him the Primo bus, it's a joke. Bounce, bounce, bounce. Now, y'all want to change the name of the streetcar on the West Side? Parking ride, crossroads parking ride? Y'all need to tear that down and rebuild it. The place smells bad. They don't put the air conditioning on, and people are just overheated in Randolph Parking Ride. That should have been rebuilt, put in another location. VIA haven't did that. Y'all getting ready to put two or three on the South Side. Now, I got to talk about this right quick. VIA is ripping the people off. When people put money in the box, I was at Leon Valley. These people were from China, and they said, sir, you have five, you have change for five dollars? I said, no. I said, when you get on the bus, tell the bus driver that you want change. So they told the bus driver, and he pondered, and he pondered, and I said, ahem. He said, oh, yeah, that's right, we can give you a change card, and you take it down there. No, you, when you get on the next bus, you get your change. And I said, well, wait a minute, wait a minute, stop, 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 wait a minute. They should go to the transit company and get their money back. Now, I'm going to write y'all a letter, because y'all rushing me, and y'all discriminated against me at the last meeting. We had three minutes, and Mr. Porcenio, all y'all buddies and friends and family, they talked five, ten, fifteen, twenty, and thirty minutes. That's discrimination. Have a good day.
The next speaker has time yielded to him from Candy Ramirez and Eddie Salinas for a total of nine minutes. George Alejos.
Good afternoon, board members. My name is George Alejos. I'm with the League of United Latin American Citizens here in San Antonio, Council 4383. And it's difficult to approach the commissioners because of the heated conversations or the statements made before me, but I empathize with those people and Mr. Ferris, because we have reason to believe that the streetcars are not in the best interest of San Antonio and the citizens. Now, in 2004, we made you a, we allowed you to establish the district that you wanted, and you promised us not to use the funds for any streetcar, light rail, whatever you want to call it. So I expected you to abide by that promise. You haven't. Tomorrow, I'll probably see Doug Pontic in Austin, since I'll be there at the hearings since I'm the appellant regarding the lawsuit that we filed. Hopefully, that that hearing will prevail, and if we do, we'd like for you to listen to us when we come back and sit down and open a dialogue. Regardless of what former Council Congressman Gonzalez has said, that this thing is a done deal, it might be, but we are not going to allow you to spend our tax dollars for anything concerning streetcars, light rail, or whatever you want to call it. Now, the issue is no longer whether or not it's in the best interest of San Antonio to have streetcars, or if it's fashionable for the city, as Mayor Castro has said. What is important today is whether or not we, as citizens, have the right to vote. And all of you are telling us we don't. Well, I beg to differ with you, gentlemen. When I woke up this morning, I still lived in the greatest country, and that's called the United States of America, which allowed me to vote on any issues that the people want to vote on. This is a government by the people, for the people, and of the people. That's what Lincoln said back in the Gettysburg Address. And to this day, it's still a government of the people, by the people, and for the people. It's not a government of elected officials. It's not a government for the appointees of the elected officials. It's a government of the people. Let me just share with you some information that came across to me this afternoon, and that is, the official statement VIA published on Wall Street to support its ATD-backed bonds, which we stopped. And basically, what this, this email that was sent to me says that VIA now admits that it's going to cost four hundred and nineteen point five million dollars, not the two eighty-nine or the two ninety-seven that you've been advertising for the past year or so. From your own VIA-published report, it says, to this day, the table shows that it's going to cost four hundred and nineteen point five million. Keep that in mind. And I've got the document here. So, our position is that VIA should allow the citizens to vote, and if we vote and we don't want it, and you guys get a ninety-five percent response saying no to the streetcars, listen to us. And on the other hand, if you put it to vote and we lose, we'll back away, but let the people vote. I'll end my comments on that issue. I will now take the one that I am very disappointed about, and that is, your attempts to condemn a property located at the corner of Flores and Fredericksburg Road belonging to Ms. Candy Ramirez and Mr. Eddie Salinas. In fact, they were served with a note as the lawsuit this morning, or today, VIA Metropolitan Transit Authority condemnation versus Candy Ramirez and Patricia Ramirez Espinoza, condemned niece. Apparently, you've been trying to acquire this property for the past six years, and you haven't done anything about it, and in fact, you opened up a dialogue at one time to consider leasing the property. I guess your intentions were to make additional parking available for the employees. Why now, at this hour, are you attempting to condemn the property? In my opinion, that's been a bully, and that's been very malicious, because... In my opinion, that's being a bully, and that's being very malicious, because Mr. Eddie Salinas went to the, went to the, to the trouble of finding out exactly what is in this area. He gave me a map showing that within a three-block radius, there are properties that are appraised or valued at $175,000, all the way to $1 million, and yet you people want to condemn this piece of property. That is outrageous. I'm asking you to reconsider this. I'm asking you to open up a dialogue, and let's visit on this and see we can do something other than condemn a property, so you can make use of it. And the last thing I want to say is, we're having a Cesar Chavez March on Saturday, 9:00. You're welcome to join us. Thank you.
Eric Gutierrez.
Hello, good afternoon. Like Mr. Bozinho, this is my first board meeting. I remember him when he was the city manager, and thank you for your service. I was like six, seven years old at the time.[667.00][667.00](Laughter) I want to give thanks to, to give thanks for the brief moment of reflection at the, I'd like to give thanks for the board to offer the brief moment of reflection and the pledge of allegiance. I was actually shocked that this was done in this kind of setting, and I think it's really important. I'm not here as part of a Sierra Club or any club, I'm a citizen. I'm a call center manager at a large banking center here in San Antonio, and the reason I'm here is for customer service. My aunt called me one day and told me that she was at a bus stop on the south side, and every time she would sit there, the bus would just pass her by. And it's an enclosed shelter, sitting there, and she would call me, and I didn't believe her. I thought she was just, you know, imagining the bus going by and it didn't go by, and she had, you know, dementia. So I went, I sat there, and sure enough, at this time, three times, the bus passed me by by just sitting there. And I would call, and I would get somebody at the call center, and just totally not sympathetic, just will pass it on with no other alternative. And I mean, I think of my aunt, I think of the other older generation, or even people with a lot of kids, lots of groceries, just sitting there, and for this bus just to pass by, I mean, I knew it was nothing personal, but there was a, I don't know what the reason is. Since then, my aunt has passed, so that's why this is, I promised her that I would do this for her. I've called into customer service several times, and it seems like the younger, the younger employees care, and they, you can hear it in their voice, but the older people that have been here for 20, 30, 40 years, they just, it's just going to something they're going to note and just not really care about. Same thing with the bus drivers. The older bus drivers that are about to retire, they don't really, I feel they don't feel like, you know, you talk to them, you ask them something, it's like you get this short answer, but the younger ones that know that they have a career with Villa, really care. And as far as Primo and all the streetcar, I'm for it. I think it's great, I think city, you know, our city needs to progress with other cities, but I think we need to get back to the basics, which is customer service. What happens here in this building, what happens on the bus, the way people are treated, the way people are spoken to. And I just want to close with, just thank you for all your work, and thank you for allowing to have these meetings to, for us to come and talk about things like this. Thank you. Thank you, Alex.
Rachel Ziewinski.
Hello, my name is Rachel Ziewinski. Bus stop 62813 is in my front yard. I'm a life member of the Sierra Club, and I happen to also be the citizen representative on the Pedestrian Mobility Advisory Committee at the Metropolitan Planning Organization. I'm here today primarily to advise you that of the three routes passing Trinity University, 509, 7, and 8, none of them currently have handicap access to the university. I think this was an oversight when the routes were rerouted because of a construction on Hildebrand. That construction is not slated to be finished till July. Currently, the 509 has two stops on the sidewalk, but they don't actually connect to anywhere you can get to at the university. It has limited hours, and it doesn't run on Sunday. Unfortunately, on the 7 and 8, only the northbound bus stop at the Alamo Stadium has a stop there, and it, I have contacted all the applicable authorities, and only the City of San Antonio Public Works engineer told me he had looked at the aerial photos and understood the problem and would recommend a change. However, rather than waiting for them to actually construct a new curb ramp there, I want, I'm asking for you to consider moving the bus stop to, or finding some other solution, because there's simply no access to that university right now for people with certain mobility impairments. I appreciate your consideration. And also, I'd like to bring to your attention that I think Villa needs to be much more proactive regarding marathon rerouting. I take the bus to go to church on Sunday mornings. First of all, since the buses in residential areas run generally once an hour only on Sunday mornings, sometimes it takes people up to three or four times as long to get somewhere on Sunday. And then, a lot of times, we're rerouted for marathons. Once already, I was at, on the Route 32, and we were waiting between 15 and 20 minutes to cross a marathon route. Other times, it's been rerouted, but it seems that in this process, the public transit is just forced to adapt to whatever has been approved by the city, and it needs to get better consideration than that. And I also would like for you to review the fact that right now, if you call in to place a customer comment or concern, you're forced to go through the 3622020 number, wait. I've sometimes waited frequently more than 20 minutes. Then you have to wait again to talk to someone. This morning, I called because there were exhaust fumes coming into a bus, had to wait a significant amount of time to talk to the first person, then have to wait for the second person. If I wait more than 45 minutes the second time, I hang up, because generally, I know that that person's just never going to get around to talk to me. And so I'm asking you to review that, because it is critical, and it has limited hours, and I think we need to communicate better. Thank you.
Lori Zertucci.
I guess, my name is Lori Zertucci. My continuing fight is always with the technology. I like to book my trips and cancel through the technology, and I've turned in a couple of times, when I call to make a reservation, sometimes a female voice would come on and say, "There's been a semantic error, goodbye." And if it's some kind of trip denial, can't the technology say something else other than a semantic error? Because if it says, "There's been a semantic error," and then it hangs up on you, you don't know if there's something wrong with it, or your trip is being denied by the technology. And I turned it in a couple of times and never heard, got a response from it, from anybody. And I was, they picked me up late from work today to go to, come to the meeting. I didn't get picked up till 3:40, and then they left at 3:50, so, I mean, 4:50. I had, yeah, it was here 4:40, and they didn't leave the lighthouse until 4:50. So, but, my main fight mainly is with the technology. They seem to never get it fixed. It's a waste of taxpayer money. It's been up and running for a year and a half to two years, and they still can't seem to get it. And sometimes they, it calls you and tells you, "Your van is on the way," and sometimes it doesn't. And that's just my concern about the technology. Thank you.
Jackie Gorman.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, board members. My name is Jackie Gorman, and I'm the Executive Director of Sage, San Antonio for Growth on the East Side. Sage is a nonprofit charged with eastside economic development. Sage is the implementation partner responsible for all economic development activities in the recently designated East Point Promise Zone. Since 2011, the Board of Directors of Sage has vocally and publicly supported the planned urban streetcar system by issuing three board resolutions. The board feels that the streetcar project would help break the barrier between downtown and the east side created by I-37, and serve as a catalyst for transit-oriented development in the area. Sage also believes that the streetcar project supports the vision for downtown redevelopment brought forward through both SA 2020 and the Hemisphere Park planning processes. Our first resolution was issued in 2011 to support your request for the City of San Antonio to match Bear County contribution, and your applications to state and federal agencies funding to implement, for funding to implement the north-south leg of the streetcar plan. To further show our support, in 2012, the board issued a second resolution urging Villa to add additional routes for the streetcar system into the east side, as it developed its long-range comprehensive plan for expansion of the urban streetcar system. Our most recent resolution was issued in August of 2013 to urge you to select the Chavez-to-Labour-to-Montana alignment that culminates at the Thompson Transit Center, which allows for future uninterrupted connectivity to the east side on Montana-to-East commerce. I have copies of all three of these resolutions for the new board members, and as a reminder for the continuing board members. Effective transportation solutions are critical for the revitalization of any community, particularly the east side of San Antonio. We need Villa to continue to be a strong partner in our efforts to revitalize this community. The urban streetcar project, along with the redevelopment of the Thompson Transit Center on the east side, will have a significant impact on our efforts. Therefore, on behalf of the Board of Directors of San Antonio for Growth on the East Side, I congratulate you on your efforts to date to bring a modern streetcar system to the City of San Antonio, and encourage you to continue to fight the fight and do the hard work, and let you know that we will be with you throughout your efforts. Thank you.
Roman Nick Peña.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Bozinho, it's good to see you again.
Welcome.
And members of the Villa board. I think we still know a few here. My name is Roman Peña, better known as Nick Peña, and I'm president of Don Roman Incorporated, a downtown merchant by the El Mercado, Market Square, and I want to thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you this afternoon. I will speak to you on the streetcar project. From the very beginning, we went to a lot of meetings that you had all over the city, informing the citizens about what you were about to undertake, and we saw the model and the concept and the vision that you all had. So, the merchants of El Mercado, together with Mi Tierra Corporation and other members of the downtown area, decided to support this idea, and we went all out to support you on this project that you undertook about a year or two ago. It is because of the many reasons that it has the benefit of serving the community. We know that lately, you have had a lot of discussion on the subject, and a lot of people have not been too favorable to it, but this idea is beneficial to the local residents who cannot afford to pay for parking and can enjoy the sights. It's great for tourists and locals alike to visit the cultural and entertainment venues and various restaurants and shopping centers downtown, enhance the economic equality and opportunity for small business entrepreneurs to participate in this endeavor. Revitalizes the inner city and west side of downtown. The east-west coplet along Commerce and Market Square ensures a ready-made ridership base. However, you have rerouted, decided to do a different route. We had supported Alternative 6. I don't know, Mr. Bozinho, if you're familiar with Alternative 6. That was the one coming out of Broadway, coming down Martin, then down to the, to the West Side Multi-Model Transit Center, then going down Market Square, and down Cesar Chavez, and on down to the Robert Thompson Transit Center. We had supported that because it's very, it covers the whole territory, and it goes downtown to Navarro Street. However, here in the last recommendation that you all had, you all recommended that it just goes down, I think it's Route Number 8. And I just don't see the reasoning, why Number 8? Because it comes down Broadway, goes down Martin Street, and only to the West Side Model Center. It has no, no impact in the tours, because this is a, this is an attraction for the locals to come downtown and ride a trolley, or ride a streetcar, and have fun, and watch the, all the venues downtown, and the tours especially. I've been to cities where there is a lot of, lot of streetcars.
I believe your time is up, but thank you for your comments.
Oh, okay. All right. Well, thank you very much for allowing me to speak, and I'm sorry I came a little late, but we weren't told about it until yesterday. So, thank you very much, and continue the project, Mr. Bozinho. It's a good one.
Mr. Chairman, there are no more citizens to be heard.
Thank you. We want to thank all of you for taking the time to be here and provide your comments. I think a lot of good information, a lot of good feedback, particularly for some of us who are newer on the board, but it's good to get the feedback, and it's really important that you all took the time to be here, so we appreciate that. Our staff is available to work with you and follow up on some of the details, any specific questions you may have. And with that, we'll conclude our item once it's preferred, and move on to our next item on the agenda, which is the consent agenda. You have a motion and a second for approval of the consent agenda. Are there any comments or questions to pull on any of those? Yeah, motion and a second, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, nay. Motion carries. That brings us then to consideration of our individual items, and the first one is a presentation on our Southwest Connector Corridor Analysis Update, and Ms. Noy is making that presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and board members. I am Katandra Noy, the manager of planning in the Strategic Planning and Project Development Division. Tonight, we're going to be talking about the Southwest Connector Corridor Study. I have with me Tom Harrington of Cambridge Systematics. He is a senior project manager for the study with Cambridge, and the staff member that manages this on the Villa side is Christina Castano. The Southwest Connector Corridor Study was identified in a long-range transportation, comprehensive transportation plan that the board endorsed a couple of years ago. And so, it is a study that looks at transportation options in the southwest portion of our community. Tom.
Good afternoon, glad to be here. I'm just going to give you a quick overview of our study objectives, give you a little bit of background that Katandra mentioned on the long-range transportation plan in terms of how this study originated, a little overview of the corridor in terms of the land use and transportation characteristics of the corridor, and then an overview of our process, our study process and schedule as we move forward. So our study is looking at the benefits, costs, and impacts of high-capacity transit in this Southwest Connector Corridor. We're going to consider not only the transportation side, but also land use. What are the potential development scenarios in that corridor that would be helpful in terms of supporting high-capacity transit? We'll come out of the study recommending both short-term bus improvements in the corridor, and those could include things like transit signal priority, improvements to bus customer facilities, and service enhancements. But ultimately, we'll recommend a long-term transit alternative, an investment in the corridor, that we would bring back to the board to seek a recommended locally-preferred alternative in the corridor. So the long-range transportation plan took a comprehensive look at the whole system and looked at a number of corridors, ranked them, prioritized them in terms of which ones had high potential for high-capacity transit. And by high-capacity transit, we're talking about frequent service, and ideally, where transit is given priority in terms of higher quality, operating speeds, and so forth. The study- The study had looked at activity centers throughout the area and also looked into long-term growth. So, in terms of the corridors that were recommended, the Southwest Corridor, which is shown there, highlighted in yellow, and consisting of primarily General McMullen in a north-south alignment and Southwest Military, was one of the corridors recommended and highlighted as a bus rapid transit corridor in that study. In subsequent work we've done, we've also highlighted Zarzamora is an important corridor, and as part of our study, we're going to broaden it to include that as well. So, generally, we're looking at a nearly 20-mile corridor, starting in the northwest. It starts at the Medical Center area, kind of moving down, as I said, both McMullen and Zarzamora, and then serving to the Port San Antonio area in the southwest, and then extending along Military out to Brooks. So, some of the key issues there, this is a corridor where redevelopment is really important, and with Port San Antonio and Brook City Base, there's a lot happening already that this corridor builds on. Access to jobs is critical all over the city, but certainly in this corridor, we're looking at ways to connect where people live with some of these key job centers. And in particular, as a corridor that goes outside of downtown, we're thinking about connectivity and how people get on transit to where the jobs are. In some cases, this is a corridor where you see a lot of transfer activity because routes may not go directly to jobs, but having good connections is critical. Also critical is making sure we have good walk access and making sure that transit is integrated with walkable communities and making sure we have good improvements like sidewalks to make that happen. And finally, another issue we've seen is the impact that accurate railroad crossings have on bus operations in this area, and so we'll be looking at some of those operational issues in terms of how they affect performance. And I've touched on a few of the activity centers, so in addition to some of the big institutional centers such as Brook City Base and Port San Antonio, a lot of commercial activity in the corridor, a number of shopping malls, as well as educational institutes and so forth. So, it's an area that serves a lot of San Antonio's key activity centers. When we look at the land use in the corridor, this is a map showing population density. You can see that the overall study area, the broad study area, has half a million people. As we look to areas that are a little closer, walking distance to some of the alignments we're looking at, it's a little less, 200,000, but clearly, a lot of people in this corridor. Density's ranging at about 4,000 persons per square mile. Obviously, there are key, there are pockets where we have higher densities that are going to be very supportive of transit with kind of a rule of thumb that we're trying to get more than 5,000 persons per square mile to serve frequent fixed-route service. Also, a number of jobs with over 200,000 in the greater area. This corridor tends to have a lower household income than other bus corridors in the system, and it also, as a result, has a higher percentage of transit-dependent riders. So, clearly, we want to make sure that we're providing access to all in this corridor. And interestingly, as we look at this corridor in the context of growth, it's areas maybe just outside this corridor, particularly to the west and northwest where some of the highest growth is happening in the region, and so we want to see how we can connect this corridor and with where growth's occurring. Looking at current transit use, we have a number of significant high-ridership bus routes already in this corridor. So, the 520 that's shown in pink, which serves Zarzamora Corridor, has over 6,000 daily trips, so it's a highly productive route going from the Medical Center in the northwest down to the Madla Transit Center in the south. Route 524 in yellow, which is the General McMullen Drive Corridor, little less ridership, but also it's one that's used throughout the day. The 550, 551, which provides the looper service around the city, that section in Military is one of the highest-performing segments of that corridor, and that overall route is also more than 6,000 a day, as well as the Route 100 Primo service on Frederick's Bird Road. So, some of the highest-performing routes in the system, and when we look at activity at bus stops, you can see we have some significant boarding and alighting locations and some of the top transfer locations in the system, because as I mentioned, often to get to other activity centers like downtown, you do have to make a transfer, and so at places like Zarzamora and Commerce, we see a lot of bus-to-bus transfer activity, as well as the transit centers in the corridor. Our studies, we're going to go through a comprehensive planning look, generally starting at the conceptual level, and then we're going to look at some more detailed alternatives, and throughout, we're going to be working with stakeholders, sharing our findings, and ultimately, coming down to some preferred alternatives in the corridor. So, stakeholder involvement, public involvement's critical. We'll continue to work with the board and brief the board periodically at key milestones, but we're also convening a technical advisory committee, which will have representatives of some of the public agencies in the area, and they'll be helpful in terms of setting the, giving us input on the needs in the corridor. We also will reach out periodically to groups in the community and the general public through public meetings, presentations to groups, and using website and newsletter and other means to get out to our stakeholders. When I was talking about a comprehensive look, we'll really start the study with this look at all transit modes on the table, so from local bus improvements to primo-type rapid bus improvements, to shown in the lower-left corner, a fully dedicated bus rapid transit on its own right-of-way, to light rail options, and then as we look at the costs and the ridership impacts, we'll narrow that list down to what's appropriate and maybe most promising for this corridor. And as we evaluate those improvements, we'll be looking, obviously, at mobility improvements, but we'll also look at land use and economic development, because as I said, those are critical to the success of the project, and those are the, these are the measures that, for example, the Federal Transit Administration looks at when they evaluate transit projects as well. We'll look at the potential impacts on the environment, and we'll also consider equity in terms of how well this serves particularly transit-dependent populations. So, it's an 18-month study. We're right now in our project initiation and needs assessment phase. Shown with the highlighted yellow stars are kind of key milestones where we'll be seeking input, and so, beginning in May, we'll seek input on the needs that we've identified to make sure that we've heard from stakeholders about needs in the corridor. Then, in our Phase One, we'll lay out possible options and get input on narrowing that list down. We'll test those in Phase Two using a travel forecasting model and bring back information on how they do. Finally, we'll refine a shorter list of alternatives and bring those forward in the spring of 2015 to seek a locally-preferred alternative. And the study's underway, and we're going to be meeting with our technical advisory group in April, and as I said, wrapping up work on a needs assessment and then beginning to share that with stakeholders with regular updates to the board. And that concludes our presentation.
Thank you for the presentation. Does anybody have any questions?
One question, Mr. Chairman. In your study of the impact on land uses, will we be able to evaluate what the results of our transit-oriented development would be when you look at the values of land, vacant land, future use of land as a result of our increased service to those areas? Will you be able to provide that with us, or is that outside your scope?
We are definitely looking at scenarios within this corridor, so to the extent that we will develop some scenarios that look at some of the things you mentioned, vacant land, where some of the cities' reinvestment districts are. We're working very closely with the city planning staff in particular, and they'll be a close partner when we get out and we work with stakeholders. We'll be working with the planning office on what's realistic in terms of some of those development scenarios. So, certainly, within our corridor, that's a major part of what we'll be looking at.
This includes looking at the existing conditions. That's a really big piece, understanding the sidewalk conditions, opportunities for infrastructure investments, and where we pay the most particular attention is within the station areas, and those would be identified and working with the city of San Antonio, determining those that have the best opportunity for us to increase densities in those areas to facilitate increased ridership.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, go ahead, please.
Just one friendly suggestion, perhaps on the listings of the activity centers and so on, when you have Port San Antonio, you've covered it basically, but there also is the Southwest Campus of St. Phillips College, which is, has been historically in need of transportation and efficient and effective transportation for the students going there too. So, I just want to suggest, and that could be easily incorporated into the list, so that, because you have sort of an education connection already going there. Thank you. Anybody else?
Okay. Thank you very much for that presentation and that update. We look forward to, I guess the next will be coming up at the end of Phase Two. Okay. Thank you. See you soon. That brings us into our next item on our agenda, which is the Modern Streetcar Update, and Mr. Buchanan will be making that presentation.
Good afternoon, Chairman, members of the board. Joining me this evening is Linda Mifsud. She has joined us, and I hope I got her name right. I've been working this all day.
Now, it looked like you screwed it up.
Yeah, I know.
What's your name, Ms.?
I'll have her introduce herself.
Good evening. My name is Linda Mifsud, and even the preacher got that wrong when I married my husband, so don't feel bad, Brian.
Linda, we'll use that, has joined us as a full-time employee. She's with HNTB. She has moved to the San Antonio region and reports to work every single day inside our office, and she is here to help us move the streetcar program forward as we move through this process. So, this evening, I'd like to have her give the update presentation. I will just also remind all the board members of the meeting on Thursday, where we will be able to spend an in-depth amount of time to have a discussion on the streetcar program, especially the vehicle concepts and the vehicle procurement that's upcoming. So, Linda?
Thank you very much, Brian, for that wonderful introduction. Just a brief update, where we are in our schedule. As you know, we have a locally-preferred alternative. We have completed the alternatives analysis, and at the end of the year, 2013, we not only identified the phasing, what we're going to build first, but we also asked the Federal Transit Administration to allow us to enter their project development process, and we asked for their confirmation for our moving forward in the environmental process. So, today, we are involved in the environmental engineering and funding process. Following that, towards the end of the year, our schedule, our anticipated schedule, has us going into final design. Following that, in the fall of 2015, we anticipate construction for an operation date of 2017. We just held a scoping meeting, what is a public meeting, to identify what our environmental process is going to study, what the project is, and we've, I'm very happy with the comments that we've received today. We also received a number of comments, 75 people attended on the March 6 meeting. Chair Vizceno also attended and addressed the audience. We have received a number of comments since then, many focusing on technical aspects that we will be studying for the environmental assessment, construction-related, and then general project comments for or against. We are simultaneously conducting a historic and archaeological review, federally-required review that was initiated on February 25th. It involves all the federal, state, and local agencies, and we're making good progress on that. As you look at San Antonio, and you're going through the downtown area, there are a lot of historic properties, and so we're following that project very closely so that we can avoid any potential impacts. The other aspect of our project development is we're completing the environmental process, but we're also looking at submitting a proposal for rating in the federal process for small starts funding, and in doing that, we'll be preparing the project description, travel forecast, all of the benefits associated with the project, as well as the financial plan. This is a very good place to be. As you look at the map, we have a number of projects that are, that compete for federal funding, and to be in the project development process for San Antonio is an excellent place to be for this project. I recently just moved from Fort Lauderdale, and they had very good results with their project known as The Wave, and so we are in very good company with these projects around the United States. On Thursday, we will be going into more details on the vehicle process. We have been conducting an industry review, and the requests for information and comments on some preliminary information has netted a tremendous response of nine car builders and two suppliers. The board workshop on Thursday will get into more of those details. We will be developing the industry design further, and we're anticipating the beginning, the initiation of that procurement process to start May 1st. We are looking for procurement process to be completed at completion of the NEPA process, which is scheduled for later this year. So, we're in that process today and look forward to having a more in-depth discussion with you all on Thursday. So, we're continuing the preliminary engineering, the environmental assessment, we're developing a small starts application for FTA's capital investment grant, we're beginning the vehicle procurement, and we're continuing an ongoing public engagement process.
Thank you for that presentation. Does anybody have any questions or comments?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. If we could go back to the page two, I just had a question. It appears that the construction documents are going to take at least a year. Is that right?
So, this shows a traditional design-bid-build type process, so when you finalize environmental, you go into final design. As I've had discussions with the board about the delivery method of this project, we may have a discussion about delivering this project as design-build. So, that means as soon as, sometime at the end of this year, we'll be out on the street looking for a contractor to bring in. So, that's a conversation we still need to have with you to make sure that that's the way we want to deliver this project, and then the schedule will kind of change with that whole final design aspect of that. But we can't do any construction work until we have the NEPA clearance at the end of this year.
Including, including design, including any?
We're doing design work right now, like conceptual engineering, preliminary engineering, we're doing that. It's like up to 30%. Final design is kind of like that 30 to the end. We're doing design work right now also.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
Good. Thank you for the update. I know we got scheduled for Thursday afternoon, an extensive workshop.
Yeah, I will, fair warning, that could be a long workshop. We have some great graphics and some great information we want to give you guys, so I would appreciate if we could make sure you're all there to see that, so as many as possible. Thank you. I believe it's 1:30.
It's at 1:30.
Starting.
1:30 to 4:30, we're saying, in this location.
Yes. This location.
They didn't want us buying lunch.
They didn't want to buy lunch. Oh, heck no.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'd like to take just a moment and welcome our, one of our new board appointees by the Bear County, former councilmember Bobby Pettis, who's in the audience. I know you're here, Bobby, just observed, but I think we've got a spot for you up here.
We've got a seat for you, Bobby.
You're trying to hide back there. Welcome. And a few moments will let you give us your update on the streetcar project.
Mr. Manager, I'll probably need a little bit more time than Brian will, so he has three hours allotted, so if you can double me down, I can start. Thank you. Thank you for allowing me to be here. Looking forward to working with all of you. Exciting times, and you'll hope to be a contributor and work hard with you as you move through the process.
We're looking forward to your participation as well. Well, good. That brings us then to the next item on our agenda, and that is the update on renaming the Westside Multi-Modal Transit Center, and I believe Priscilla Engel is going to initiate that presentation.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman and members of the VIA board. I am here with Al Aguilar from Creative Civilization, and we're going to give you an update on where we are with the branding of the Westside Multi-Modal Transit Center. This is a project we've been working on for the last This is a project we've been working on for the last several months, and we wanted to give you an update on where we are, what our findings are to date, and to get your input before we move further along in this process. So I will turn the microphone over to Al.
Thank you, Priscilla. Good afternoon, thank you, Mr. Chairman and Board of Directors of the new VIA. I'm happy to present an update on the development of the Westside Multimodal Branding Task. And just to put it into perspective, I was thinking about this, the evolution of what transpired from what was known as the Bus Rapid Transit System, and BRT. And it became known as Primo, and we see what happens, the effectiveness and the importance and the value of branding. So the presentation today will be delivered in two sections. First, to share with you the collaborative development process and steps that have been taken in this development process with key stakeholders. And then secondly, I'm going to share with you a number of concepts for consideration. Those concepts we believe to be both strategically and creatively sound. Our overall goal in this branding approach is to create an iconic brand identity for the Westside Multimodal Transit Center. We see those two images of the historical images of what has transpired in this important part of our community, from what was in the past a train station to the renderings of what we see is going to be in the future. But it's much more than a transportation location. It's a gathering place, a place that brings people together. The development process undertook several steps. We began with an exploratory roundtable discussion with key community stakeholders from the West Side. Those groups represented included folks from the Mercado Association, University Health System, Robert B. Green Campus, the UTSA Downtown Campus, the Avenida Guadalupe Association, the West Side Development Board, and among others. We also conducted some one-on-one consultation with individuals who for generations have lived and have operated businesses on and along the West Side, and shared with them the concept and ideas to gather their feedback. We reviewed architectural renderings and the vision from the architectural firm, and then we began the process of developing concepts, early concepts, the development of brands, the development of ideas and looks. And we brought back that roundtable of group together to share with them those early concepts. And we received a lot of good feedback from them as well. We furthermore then presented the round of concepts to the Planning and Project Development Committee here recently. And here today, we'll give you a follow-up with what has been shared with that group. Some of the stimuli that we provided to the groups were some of the early renderings. This goes back a bit, but just to share with them the overview of what was going to transpire with these types of images. And it began to really elicit a lot of really good feedback. And these are some of the insights and key things that they asked us to keep in mind. That we position this brand as a cultural asset for all of San Antonio. This is not just for the West Side, but this is a meaningful place, a meaningful destination for everyone in the San Antonio area. That we communicate a sense of inclusion, diversity, and centrality. That this be, communicate this as a destination embodies a friendly and approachable environment, and that it also represents a continued investment and commitment to the community. These are their words. These are the stakeholders that shared with us their vision as we shared with them the overall look and feel. We call these our gotta-dos. These become the litmus test, if you will, when we began the development process, concepts and brand names. What do we ultimately need to deliver with these brand names as we take a look at these? It needs to be an iconic type of image and name. Simplicity is key, it needs to be memorable, and very, very importantly, it needs to be meaningful. And we spent a lot of time talking to folks about what does this place mean to you? What could it possibly mean to the entire community as a whole? And finally, that it must be marketable in the way that we communicate them. We begin with this image. As we've talked about this project, the Westside Multimodal Transit Center in communication, and we try to explain to folks where that is. Where the physical geographic location of that place is, and it's very, very tough. But when you remind them, and you say, "You know that building with the sculpture of the Indian on top of that building?" Immediately, everyone identifies with that, generation upon generation. It is a, it is an endearment, if you will, an endeared type of visual that captures everyone's attention and understanding of it exactly where that is. So that created the opportunity then to build a graphic and artistic type of look and feel, borrowing from this iconic image. And we created this concept. The colors are not represented real clearly here. It's more of a blue, goldish type of color. But this visual interpretation becomes that type of signature button, just like we have a Nike Swish and those types of symbols that we see on and on again. This type of symbol would help to represent exactly what we're, what our location. Now, a number of brand considerations came into place. And the very first one, it goes back to a brand name associated specifically, not only with that sculpture piece, but the, also the glass of the Indians, the stained glass of the Indians that are pointing to the San Pedro Creek. We learned a very important history lesson of just what that, what that represents. It is paying homage to the people who founded this area. The Payaya Indian Tribe are those who founded, were the early settlers in this area. And so with that, the idea then became, well, let's take advantage of, of paying homage to the early settlers. And the idea then was, one of the brand names under consideration is Indio Square. And Indio Square would be the inclusive area of the depot as well as the plaza area. You see the symbol that we've created, and that would be a very contemporary type of treatment to the canopy that we see along in the plaza area. On the left-hand side, you see the visual interpretation, what the overall brand would look like. On the right-hand side, we have sub-branding for the depot area, for example. That led to another idea, and in thinking about this strategically, and that was for us to consider our location from another vantage point. As we stood in front of one of the doors and we looked to the east, we realized something very important. We're not necessarily anchored on Medina Street, we're the anchor of Houston Street. And Houston Street, as we know historically, has been San Antonio's main street for many, many generations. It continues to evolve and transform in its various different lives. But the Majestic Theater and Frost Bank, we all know Houston Street. What if we were to have the opportunity to erase that barrier, that Interstate 35 freeway, and create this connectivity so that we're inclusive of the overall of the downtown area? So the idea then was to brand this the Houston Street Station. It anchors Houston Street. The next idea was an idea to utilize the brand name of West, the West Side. How do we take the idea of West Side and evolve it to something in a very positive way? And as we learned in speaking to individuals, the idea of West End was something that is very powerful. It exists in London, it exists in Dallas, and other areas where the West End has become a new, cool, revived hip area of town. And perhaps we could borrow from that so that we could take our West location and transform it into something very positive. Building on that, the idea of West, another variation of that idea came forward, and that's the idea of this name, Grand West Station. Something grand, something important is happening here. This is not the West Side of old. This is a new, powerful, robust West Side of downtown. Like Grand Central Station, we have Grand West Station. And some of the discussion amongst Board members and others as well suggested, perhaps this is an entry point, perhaps this is not the end, but the beginning of a place. This is a gateway. So the idea then becomes Gateway, West Station. A couple of other thoughts and considerations came into play most recently. And one has to do with utilizing our heritage, our bilingual community, the fact that our strong Spanish language roots. And, you know, in this community, if you ask someone, "What does Sontera mean?", no one can really tell you what Sontera or what La Cantera means, but everyone recognizes those brands, and it becomes very much something that is ingrained in our community today, is something very, very positive. We think we have an opportunity to also explore some Spanish language words that help us to be connected to our, the uniqueness of our community, but that also work in that fashion. One is a very simple idea that says very simply, El Centro Station. And when you ask them, "When I'm going to go downtown?", you say, "Voy al centro." "I'm going to go downtown." Or when you say, "This is the center, this is the hub of where everything's happened, where everything happens." It's El Centro. So we're re-establishing perhaps with this name that this, our facility here, the Westside Multimodal Transit Center, is actually a new center, a center of activity, a center of connectivity. It's El Centro. And then finally, this one is what I call the wildcard. And the wildcard is one that emanated from a different line of thinking. When we think of the primary brand name, VIA, V-I-A, and we started thinking of derivatives of utilizing those three words. There are words like viaje, there are things like viajero, and things that incorporate our very name into Spanish language words that might have the ability for us to enjoy both of those type of things. So here's one idea where we went from El Centro Station, which we think is very simple and powerful, to Viajero Plaza. Passenger Plaza, Traveler Plaza is the literal translation to that. But obviously, the first three letters in the name is VIA. And a unique way and a unique fashion of us being able to incorporate all of that. So finally, as I mentioned, there are also, because we have two distinct physical and geographic locations that we're branding here, we also think it's important to sub-brand those two distinct areas. So if it were, for example, El Centro, it would be the depot at El Centro, or the plaza at El Centro, just to distinguish the two characteristics of the two particular areas. I finally, for demonstration purposes, share with you those seven brand names. It's a lot, it's seven names, but we wanted to give you a full breadth of what we believe. Those are names that began to kind of percolate, that began to rise to the top, that invoked a lot of discussion, and in many different fashions, had a lot of positive type of reactions to different ways. We've conducted some informal focus groups, and those informal focus groups have suggested to us some that stand out more than others. There are three in particular that stand out more than others, but I leave that to your consideration and discussion.
At this time, we'll be happy to answer any questions you might have or hear your thoughts on what's been presented to date.
Thank you for the presentation and that update. Any comments or questions, observations? I think we're scheduled to discuss today, we're not going to be taking any action.
Are we tied to this logo? Has that, has that been, it's sealed, or is that?
I don't think it's been concluded yet.
No.
No, that logo is not, not fixed.
So what we'd like to do today is get your comments, answer any questions you might have. We'll take that back, mull through that, and come back to the Board. But right now, we're not voting on anything tonight, it's for discussion and to get your comments.
I think that's particularly helpful, since we have several new Board members as well. And so otherwise, we have to ask Bobby what he thinks. He may not be ready. Joe, did you want to assist?
I'm going to let Richard go.
Oh, I was going to just thank you both for continuing the alternatives from what initially was presented. And I like the notion of a simplistic, more simple statement as well. And I'm sure that all of us have ideas as well, that we're thinking and can suggest. I want to thank you for meeting with people throughout the process on the Board, as well as with the older Board, and in percolating these. But my feeling is that perhaps we need to look, just continue the alternatives at this point. And I would just like to encourage that as well. Thank you.
I was just wondering, is there like a timetable, Jeff, that we have to meet to get this finalized?
I'm going to ask Brian, from the perspective of construction, at some point, we'll want to, we'll be moving into construction. At some point, we'll want to put the name on the building. And so from my perspective, that's really probably the most time-sensitive element.
Yeah, it is, the branding is somewhat integrated into the construction, but honestly, that's a little ways down the road here. We do have some time, but I think it's also important to make sure we understand how this is going to all incorporate into that document. So from my perspective, I would love it to happen tomorrow, but we do have time to deal with this.
Okay.
Good. I think we want, you know, we want to take our time to discuss this further and get some more, get some more input. I have to say, the Indian, everybody remembers the Indian. And when I was a little boy, we would drive by, and my father would say, "You looking for a job?" And I'd say, "Yeah, I want to make some extra money." He says, "Well, then you need somebody to bring the Indian down twice a day to go to the bathroom." You get a quarter each time you do that, so. I tried to apply, but I didn't, never got interviewed. But I think we have several good names. I know there are other names that you all considered as well, that you kind of narrowed it down to. And it's going to be, it's going to be a tough process, particularly when you get 11 people involved in trying to decide what's the best name, so. Yes.
Yeah, sure, real quick, I just wanted to thank the staff and the consultants to, you know, having this brought to the full Board. I think it is kind of hard to make the decision. There are so many different ways you can go with this. But I think it's useful for the Board, obviously, to have the opportunity to give input as a group and try nevertheless to come up with something that makes sense. I can see some issues with using the word Indio. You know, I think it's perhaps verging on insensitive, I'm not sure. But I think though, that we want to somehow, San Antonio is a unique place in the country. It is a historic place. My wife's from Boston, so we argue about who has more to do with, you know, the independence that we feel as a nation, right? So I think that San Antonio has a unique quality in terms of being a city that has an international identity. And I think we should try to capture that in everything that we do. Although we're in Texas, I think we're not just a Texas city. We have the Hispanic or Latino history that I think we can try to, we should aspire anyway, to try to capture. So Houston Street, to me, connotes Houston, maybe not as much as San Antonio. But anyway, these are things that are in my mind, and I think frankly, it's a good challenge for us to have, and I appreciate having it, and hopefully, we will come up with something that makes sense for our community. So thanks.
Anybody else?
Yeah, and the notion of making something very simple. It seems to me that the plaza, what would capture a lot in the terms of the plaza for everybody in San Antonio, and anybody coming into San Antonio, would be something like Transportation Plaza. It captures that you can go any, it emphasizes the interconnectivity of that station to where you could go anyplace in the city, county, region, and eventually state, depending on other state activities, through that plaza. And it sort of identifies it as well, just as a thought.
Okay, great, thank you all for that update.
And if I could just say, we're not limited just to tonight for you to give comments. So if you go home, you look at this again, or thinking about it, please feel free to force your comments and your thoughts so that we can consider those as we continue to go through this process, and then come back to the Board at a later date.
We'll be a little more enlightened after a glass of wine.
We've just put up very quickly the longer list of names that were under consideration that came up in our conversations with, meeting with some of the stakeholders in the area. But you've got the PowerPoint available to you, and so we asked that you, you know, take another look at it, get back to us with any thoughts you might have as we continue to go through this process.
Mr. Chairman, a question. Is there a possibility of expanding these particular names?
Yes.
And expanding upon the logo?
Yes.
Oh, the, since the last presentation, there were two names added, as you saw to the seven. So those were two more. So those were two more. I invite, I encourage the board, if you have names that you think, if you think some of these names should be moved forward to a priority list, or you have other names that you think should be added to the priority list, just send me an email or a note and we'll put them on. At some point, then we'll need to go through a process of, you know, there may be some that will start taking off for various reasons, like Mr. Ponak mentioned.
Well, there's this one particular president of Mexico that I'd like to recognize, but I can't seem to get any mileage out of.
If you'd like us to put it on the list, we can put it on the list. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Can I offer one suggestion, Mr. Chairman? In having processed the brand development for many, many different brands in this region and around the country, I would, I would suggest that as we narrow down the field, that we conduct a series of focus groups with our consumer, with the people that we do business with, our customers. I think ultimately, they're the experts, you know, they know what they're gonna be attracted to, so. I would encourage that step.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, that brings us then to item number nine on our agenda, which is our updated space plan, and I believe Mr. Glasscock will be making that presentation.
Chumara Wright is Abigail Rodriguez. She is a staff facility planner within the Fleet and Facilities Division, and she'll be helping me out this evening. As you can see, her help is invaluable, particularly when it comes to IT issues. The perfect, purpose of this agenda item is to present the board with information on our workspace program. Staff is not requesting any action this evening, however, we do encourage any questions or any communication that will help us proceed. I should note that we made this presentation previously to both the Operational and PPD Committees. I made the presentation to the Operational Committee, and Abigail made the presentation to the PPD Committee in my absence. Okay, so we're, first want to start out with program objectives. The first and foremost, we are looking to reduce operational risk with this program. And when I'm talking about operation, well, I'm talking about bus and paratransit operations specifically. We're talking about where the rubber meets the road, we're looking to reduce risk in this particular area, and along with that, we're always looking for ways to improve operating efficiency. And then we want to make best use of available facilities. And one of the questions that came up during, during one of the committee meetings is, there was a question regarding the facilities that we looked at. We limited this particular study to only the existing facilities. Those are facilities that we currently own, especially in light of the recent acquisition and partial remodel of the Westside Multimodal Building. Continuing, we were, are looking to improve customer service, address space shortages for growing departments, especially in the project development and planning areas. We're also preparing for multimodal operation. And finally, we were looking to develop space standards for planning moving forward. And what we're talking about here is setting standards for office sizes, conference room sizes, even down to closets and break rooms. The purpose of this was to develop guidelines so that as we look forward and look at expanding or acquiring new facilities, it'll put us in a better position to plan and forecast our needs relative to what is available, and also to help us budget for new facilities. So I want to talk a little bit about the operational issues that we're trying to mitigate. The TransGuide facility, which is located at I-10 and 410, is a operational critical facility. At that particular location, our paratransit reservation, paratransit scheduling, paratransit dispatching, and also our bus dispatching is located. Now, this particular facility is not under the direct control of VIA, and for that purpose, there is considerable, or we think considerable, risk in continuing to operate those particular functions at that location. Some of the issues that we've run into in the past are unreliable backup power, maintenance issues, and our IT room at the facility is currently at capacity. Now, one of the comments that I made at the Operational Committee was that we've been doing this business a long time, and when the power goes out at this facility, we can continue to operate fixed route service without an issue. We simply go back to the paper method, and we are very well prepared to put out service and to maintain buses without a hitch, without electrical power. But at risk though, are our reservations for our paratransit service. And when we lose power at this particular facility, we lose the capability of communicating with our passengers, and that's what puts our operation, what we feel, with significant risk. Moving on, non-centralized operational control, scheduling, dispatching, this really is more to our fixed route bus service. Our dispatchers are located at TransGuide, and during emergencies, there are some losses in efficiency when, when we have communication issues between our headquarters here and the TransGuide facility. We're thinking that things would be much better if those particular groups were located centrally. And then finally, storage. We're at, we have considerable problems with our storage capacity. Our current storeroom was built to accommodate one model of bus. We now have seven models, and certainly you can see how that would present an issue for us. And then also, our fleet has grown considerably since the time that the current facility was put up. So I want to talk a little bit about our headquarters. These are four of the six buildings that we looked at in this program. And you'll see that the VMC, that's where we're currently meeting, is the orange building there, and then relative to that, the CDC, our daycare facility, then the maintenance building on the opposite end of the yard, and then of course, the administration building on the north end. Everything bounded in yellow is currently owned by VIA. So what we're looking at doing to mitigate the risks that I discussed previously is to move the mission-critical functions from the TransGuide building into the VMC. And so you see where those four functions, along with the future streetcar administration, would be moved into the VMC, where our current transportation administration and also our bus dispatchers are scheduled out. So in essence, the VMC would become the operational facility of VIA. And one of the things that's key there is we currently have a project underway where we are providing backup power for the entire facility so that in case of power loss, this entire building would be up and running with, within a second. And so in that regard, we can maintain operations under just about any condition. And I suppose I should also note, being the elder statesman here on the staff, that in my time here, I think we've gone through 200-year floods, and I can say that the VMC building is by far the driest of any of the buildings on the property. And so again, we feel that it serves as a least-risk option as far as locating our operational functions. Okay, now, the VMC is currently at capacity, so we have to make room for the functions that we're looking to move in. And so in order to accommodate the new functions, we have to move some folks out. So human resources and audit would be going to the administration building, and there's really some design here in that we want to make the human resources department as accessible as possible. This is where our potential new employees come through, this is where our current employees come to visit to discuss benefits issues with our human resources folks. And so moving this function over to the administration building and then dedicating that parking lot that's directly across from the park will help them in providing good customer service to our existing employees, and then also making it easier for potential prospects to come and apply for employment here at VIA. Recently, we've seen an issue with getting or attracting recruits, and we think this will be a step in trying to stem that. Additional moves, police and security would be going over to the daycare facility, which is slated for closure latest this year, and then we would be moving our telephone operators out to the TransGuide facility. So the idea here is we don't give up on the TransGuide building completely, we simply relocate a function with, with reduced risk to that particular area. And because we have a significant telephone system out there as it is, the information operators going out to that facility would not present much of an obstacle at all as far as the transition. Okay, now, in order to make room at the administration building, we have to move some folks out of there. And so what we're talking about doing is relocating our executive offices, our government and communication, our community relations staff, our legal department, our planning and project development folks, and also board support over to the Westside Multimodal Building. And what we're, what we're doing here is moving the departments that are not involved, directly involved in the day-to-day operations. So in other words, we are making this headquarters 100% operational, and in order to do that, we have to provide some space, and we're providing that space and relocating basically our admin group to the Westside Multimodal Facility. And then I'll kind of breeze through this, I know most of you have already seen this, but these are building-specific changes, and so those areas that are underlined at the bottom, those are the functions that are being affected by these moves. So for the VMC building, human resources, audit, police, telephone operators moving out, and in their place, bus dispatch, paratransit dispatch, paratransit scheduling, reservations, a fitness center, and streetcar administration would be moving in. Administration building, as we discussed earlier, all the executive offices moving over to Westside Multimodal, and in their place, human resources, audit, and procurement moving in. Maintenance building, one of the issues that we have now is the procurement department is completely out of space. In fact, they have bled over into the maintenance area. The procurement department was set up primarily for buying bus parts and bus parts alone, and I don't have to tell you that we've embarked on many new projects, which requires considerable work from our procurement area, and they need additional space. So in order to accommodate those needs, we would be moving them into the admin building, and with them moving to the admin building, we get extra storage in the maintenance facility. CDC, as I mentioned earlier, CDC will be closing, in their place, police, security, the onsite contract printer, and then the lost and found function would be moving to CDC. And we think this is fairly significant in that the lost and found function will be more accessible to bus passengers. There's many more bus lines that roll through the Five Points intersection where the CDC is located compared to the VMC building and the lines on San Pedro. And then the TransGuide building, as I mentioned, we'd be moving out the mission-critical functions and in their place, going back with the telephone operators. And then I should also mention that we would leave the IT infrastructure in place at TransGuide so that if there ever was an issue where we could not operate our paratransit scheduling, reservation from this location, we could at a moment's notice move those people back out to TransGuide to perform that function there. So this, the TransGuide would serve as backup to the VMC. And then, of course, Westside Multimodal, currently, the building is for the most part unoccupied, the entire second floor and most of the first floor vacant, and so we would be making use of that vacant area that we are currently maintaining and paying to control the climate. So in our estimation, we'll be making the best use of what we currently have available, and at the same time minimizing operational risk to a great extent. And then I should also mention that we did contract with an architectural firm that provided us those standards that I mentioned earlier. Again, these standards will be set, used by us to move forward when, when we're in need of facility planning, to help us budget and prepare for any acquisitions that we look at in the future. We'll talk a little bit about the funding. You see this layout here, everything that is listed in green font, we believe, needs to be spent regardless of who moves into the Westside Multimodal Building. There was a question that came up during the committee meetings regarding the costs and how much of the costs are specific to VIA staff moving to the building, and how much of these costs need to be made anyway, regardless of who moves into the building. And so we've laid that out with the font being the indicator. Seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the, to complete the renovation of the Westside Multimodal Building. Of that, approximately 490,000 needs to, is work that needs to be done regardless of who moves in there. The 192,000 to replace the roof, again, that's a given. At the VMC, I mentioned the backup power project, we already have funding for that, that was funding that was obtained with the FTA discretionary grant, so that is on the way incoming regardless of what we do, we feel that's extremely important. And then that, so that pretty much concludes the funding. I might mention that all of this funding is currently in place, and we are prepared to go. Here's a preliminary schedule for the program. Everything really depends on how soon that we can get into the Westside Multimodal Building, or get the, the executive staff and admin function into that building. So it really becomes kind of a domino effect after that. We just collected proposals for the renovation, and we plan to come to the board next month with, with that particular contract to complete the necessary renovations to both the first and second floors of the building that will prepare us to move the executive staff into that area. And then, once that happens, then, as I mentioned, it becomes a domino effect until we get everybody laid out as, as we've described this evening. So with that, I'll take any questions that you may have.
Thank you for that presentation and that update. Does anyone have any questions? Yes, go ahead.
It's such a great presentation because it, you seem to explain it in such a way that begs the question, why didn't we do it this way all along? But obviously, you're having to make space work for us, and I know, I don't think we discussed it at our committee meeting, but what's going through my mind is that you're working with a limited set of options, and you're trying to come up with the most creative solution. But in my mind, I'm thinking about, again, this is sort of an issue, Mr. Chair, that I'm sure you're familiar with, but I'm wondering to what extent, for example, this kind of issue is affected by the fact that we don't get funded for historical reasons as our sister entities throughout the state? Are we relying on, it sounds like we're looking at mostly federal funds being able to make some of this happen, most of this happen? But if we didn't have that kind of funding, I guess our options would be limited. And I wonder to what extent, you know, operational funds would, would be helpful to some extent, should, you know, if we had them. And I raise this point because we, I know that we talk about how that impacts us as an entity and how we're able to ultimately meet our mission. And I don't want us to gloss over that. I think you're doing an amazing job, it seems to me, based on what you've presented, again, with limited options and limited resources, but I think our community needs to be reminded over and over again about that funding challenge that we have. Because I do think that what's not presented in this presentation is the fact that you're, we're struggling because of that, or we struggle with that challenge. So I, I think that needs to be said, and I, and I wanted to make sure from staff, I guess, that I'm looking at that in the right way. If we had more money, we could do perhaps even more effective space planning and space utilization. utilization. Is that correct?
Well, that, that goes without a doubt. This plan was constrained by the facilities that, that are in our control, and so we came up with what we feel best address some of the operating issues and some of the space issues that we have, again, living within the constraints of existing facilities and an existing budget. And so we started looking at this probably two years ago, and last year in the capital plan, we started squirreling funds away to make some of these moves, and I think at this point, now that we've got the Westside Multimodal fully in play, that, that we're ready to go forward with this program.
Yeah, I would say that, you know, one of the reasons we are among the most cost-effective in the nation is we have a single facility. We are, we, we are the lar, we have the largest fleet at a single facility, I think, of any operator in the nation. And, and so you're, what you're seeing is the, you know, the implications of that. But when you get into that second facility, it starts really having impacts. You have another layer of management. This facility happens to be so ideally cited with respect to the service we operate that just about anywhere else you move starts increasing the cost of the service itself. So I will say, however, that, that, you know, the fact that we did acquire Westside Multimodal, and we do have that facility, has really afforded us the opportunity to do this in a very cost-effective manner, and that will, I think that what drove Gary's planning, the conceptual thing, which is let's get all of operations safe and secure in one building, let's get all the other customer-facing operations or pieces of the organization on Myrtle Street, and, and then we make use of Westside Multimodal while still, while still affording the opportunity for the retail use on the first floor. You know, I think he, he has done just a superlative job at that.
Anybody else have any comments?
I will comment on how effective that it looks to me in the planning of the, actually the emergency basis, like if the power did go out. You know, businesses don't look at what if or when, and these operational things happen. You know, electricity goes out, and I can just imagine if you were at the San Antonio International Airport and a tower goes out. You know, that's something to look at. So I do like the fact that you're looking at, if you had to go dark, how could you operate to make sure that the, the service is seamless, that the passenger doesn't under, doesn't even know there's a problem going on because service is still being provided? So I do look at that, and it is very nice.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison. Anybody else? Let me, let me just say, I think the plan is very, very thorough and comprehensive. From the financing perspective, though, the way I saw the number, it looks like it adds up to about 4.4 million, and, and we have, is it too many of that in hand already?
We, we actually have all 4 million in hand.
We have the entire 4.4 million already. And of that 4.4 million, all but about 550,000 needs to be done anyway.
Right.
And so, and so the marginal decision is really 550,000, and we have all the financing in place.
Right.
And it's all FTA money.
Yes, sir.
So the, that half penny that we get from sales tax revenues or from, or the revenues we get from the fare box is not impacted by this. And in fact, makes us more efficient, the operations.
Correct.
Which will help save additional funds in terms of that half penny in the, in the fare box revenues. So I think, overall, I think it makes a very good plan. Any other comments or questions? So you coming forward with one item on the agenda then, next month?
Yes, sir. That, that is the plan, unless we run into a bug, but that is the plan right now. We, we have taken up the proposals, and we're looking them over now, and we should come back to the board next month with a recommendation.
Very good. Thank you for that presentation.
Yeah, who was the architectural firm?
Douglas. Douglas Architects.
I just had one short question, if I could, Mr. Chair. Gary or Abigail? In TransGuide, what's the difference in the swap of personnel numbers that are there now and numbers with the telephone operators? Do we have a feel on that?
The, the, when it's all said and done, I don't recall the exact numbers, but I'm going to say that staff will be a third of what it is right now.
At TransGuide?
At TransGuide.
About 54 to 28.
And so it still has the capacity to serve as a backup facility?
Right.
Okay, any other comments or questions?
I just want to amend my, my compliment, as I directed it specifically at Gary, and make sure that I incorporate Abigail because I know who does the real work. So thank you, Abigail.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. We're getting ready to move into closed session. Before we do, though, I'd like to state publicly that I'm going to be recusing myself from one of the items on the, on the agenda in closed session because a relative of mine has interest in property that's adjacent to the property that's being considered for purchasing. So I want to recuse myself and file an affidavit stating a potential conflict of interest and will not be involved in any discussions or votes on that item. And I would ask that we move that item, which would be item 10B, up to the first item to be considered, and that way y'all can bring me back in. And Doug asks you, go ahead and chair the, the opening session. And with that, the time is now 6:58 PM, and the VIA Metropolitan Transit Board trustees will officially go into a closed executive session. The items we will discuss during this executive session are as follows. Items 10A and 10B entitled Real Estate, A Wonderland of the Americas, and B Maintenance Facility Plan, which are executive sessionized pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, entitled Consultation with Attorney, and Section 551.072, entitled Real Property. And item 11A and 11B entitled Legal Briefing, A VIA City, City of San Antonio Agreement Regarding Streetcar Portion of VIA SmartMove Program, and B Discussion and Possible Action on the Status of the Following Litigation in Regards to VIA Metropolitan Advanced Transportation District at All, Cause Number D-1-GN-13-004230 in the District Court of Travis County, Texas, 126th Traditional District, which are executive sessionized pursuant to the Texas Government Code, Section 551.071, entitled Consultation with Attorney. All persons who are authorized to attend the executive session, please proceed to the small conference room. We're back in open session. It is now, that, 8:40? 8:40, 8:40 PM, and we are officially coming out of the closed executive session regarding agenda item 10A, 10B, 11A, and 11B. No deliberations of public policy or vote-taking occurred during the executive session. And with that, are there any further items on the agenda? So do we vote on adjournment, or are we just adjourned?
We vote adjourned.
Yeah, we vote.
Do we have a motion for adjournment?
Second.
A second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're adjourned.